Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone on Wednesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three, Mapleton City Council meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Councilman Beck and led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jones.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together and to discuss matters important to the community. We're very grateful for where we live. We're especially grateful that we were spared from the flooding. Please bless us with wisdom and guidance tonight and bless us with peace and harmony as well. We love the sovereign nation and we say things in Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll go to our public forum first. First, we have Burnell Taylor and then Wendy Osborne with Tabitha's Way. So, Burnell, you'd like to come forward and state your name for Camille? That'd be great.
This is Burnell and company.
All right.
My wife Renee and Dave and Laverne Bushman, we represent about thirty neighbors up on the east side. And I called April and I says, April, we've got to, we've got to say something about the support we've gotten from the city. She said this would be the place to do it. So, we just wanted to come and express our real sincere thanks. You guys get plenty of complaints. You get plenty of mitching and boning and stuff that's going on that gives you grief. But I've personally never worked with anybody in a city like this. We've been here for thirty-five years and the support we got from your hired people as well as your city officials is just amazing. So, we got you a garbage sack.
At least you brought something, Burnell. That's awesome.
So, this is a thank you poster.
Oh, wow.
And it's just kind of a memoirs, pictures of you guys as well as the neighbors up there. Oh, yeah, sorry. All you got to see is the backside. But we just, anyway, again, I don't know if you guys want to say anything. I know you love to make speeches.
Well, yeah, I just, again, thank you so much for all your work and diligence and your patience and for all you do to help the city. And thank you so much for helping us with the flood mitigation. Thankfully, nothing really happened and we talked about that. You know, with all the sandbags that we filled and the hard labor and sweat and whatever, we would much rather have to deal with taking the sandbags and dispose of them than to
Have to use them.
Deal with the flood situation, clean out the basement full of water, mud and sand. So, thank you very much for all you did for us.
You're welcome. And I'll speak. I didn't have, I only spoke with Burnell, I think. I don't think I had Mr. Bushman in one of the meetings we were in. But I will say, we appreciate you approaching us the way you did in a respectful manner and a manner which, you know, you came out and asked us and we are absolutely a hundred percent on board. Anything we can do to help, we will, no matter what regards it is to. But we appreciate the way you respectfully came to us and worked with us and worked through those issues. Because back then, there was real fear and, you know, we didn't know, obviously none of us knew it was going to happen and there was a lot of concern and actually liability and all kinds of things going on. And you guys were respectful through the process and it was a great meeting with you and discussing with you. And a lot of times when you get in those situations, you want to explain what's going on from the city perspective. And a lot of times it's received as we're just trying to appease the situation or say it because it's the city side. But I hope that you felt that we were sincere in saying, here's where we're at and here's the options and let's work together. And you guys showed that that's what you're going to do. So, we appreciate that. It's awesome.
Well, we thought of using torches and pitchforks, but.
I know, I know.
Get an oyster now.
Your mind, Burnell, but you were kind enough to not bring them, so.
I'm just going to read what's on here and then we.
That'd be awesome. We want to take a picture when you're done.
Sure. It says to Mapleton City staff and officials from your friends and neighbors up on the east side of town, what happens when a neighborhood and city come together in a common cause? Communication takes place to prepare for the unknown. Neighbors and city cooperate in building a workable strategy. A potential flood is contained and property is protected. Our community remains safe and we become better friends. So. If you're getting a picture, these guys just seem to come and be in the picture.
This one's really our staff just coming in.
You're welcome.
Where are you going to take it, Camille? Sean, Rob, Corey, you guys.
We can make faces. Bless your mouths, please. Go away.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Wendy, you're up.
I wanted to applaud. That was pretty awesome. Good job, you guys.
When we get those, we'd like to applaud too.
Isn't that wonderful? My name's Wendy Osborne. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Tabitha's Way Local Food Pantries. First, Mayor and Councilmembers, I want to say thank you and all of you city officials for the work that you do for your community. I know it takes a lot of effort and I thank God every day I'm just called to do a food pantry. So, good for you guys for what you guys do. So, and I have a father, actually, who's a council member in his city for, I think he's coming up in twenty years out in Michigan. And so, I've seen some of the things that you guys have to deal with.
Bless his heart.
Bless your hearts.
Twenty years.
It's a long time. Yeah, little old, little city in Mount Morris, Michigan. So, anyway. But, so I wanted to address the council day one to, one, make an announcement. Tabitha's Way, each year, we hold an annual backpack giveaway event. This event is designed to help people in our community that are struggling. We provide brand new backpacks filled with school supplies and books. And it's a community event where anyone who comes who needs assistance can come and get a free backpack for their kids. This event will be held July twenty-ninth from nine AM to eleven AM at Landmark High School. And we're encouraging any of the community members that are struggling, please come and get backpack for your children. This event also has, we provide community resources. We reach out to other organizations that provide free resources for families in need and you can come and learn about those resources. And also Utah Food Bank will be there providing lunches for kids. So, please come to that event if you'd like to and spread the word. Yep, that's okay. It's July twenty-ninth from nine AM to eleven AM.
Do families need to register or indicate their interest? No, just show up.
Just show up. Just show up and it's backpacks flying everywhere. So, it's a lot of fun. And actually, we invite you to come participate or just come visit and watch and see. Nothing's more fun than watching kids pick out their favorite backpack color and pick out brand new books for them to read. So, it's a really, really fun community event. So, we'd love for you to come and see that. So, I'd also like to express gratitude to the citizens and the businesses here in Mapleton. We've had so much support. Tabitha's Way exists. We are a community-supported food pantry. And we're so grateful for the support of so many people that help us do what we do. And we can do it because of that support. So, I wanted to say thank you to the communities and businesses as well. I also wanted to provide a report back to the city. Tabitha's Way, what we have seen currently with the inflation and what's going on in our communities, we're seeing more and more families coming in. Last year, we saw a fifty-six percent increase in the number of families requesting food assistance at our food pantries. Just to kind of give you some numbers, since January of this year, our food pantry, Justin's Spanish Fork, has served six thousand seven hundred and seventy households, of which seventy-three households came from the Mapleton area, Mapleton residents. So, not a large portion from Mapleton, but still we're, you know, reaching in and serving some of these families here. With that, one thing that we are seeing right now is because of the increase in the numbers of families. So, we saw an increase of four hundred and four additional households just from first quarter to second quarter, or fourth quarter, sorry, fourth quarter from last year to first quarter of this year. So, we continue to see increasing numbers of families coming in. We also are seeing more families that are maybe on the lower end of middle-class income households coming in, just families that. And again, it's temporary food assistance. It's just, I need a little bit of help here or there. But again, we're seeing some of those families that are now being affected by food insecurity just because of costs going up and so forth and just needing a little extra help. And so, one thing we've also noticed that we're seeing a decrease in the number of food donations coming into our food pantries. So, this year, we've had three of our major annual food drives, which is Feed Utah, Stand Out Hunger and Scouting for Food food drives. And we saw fifty percent less food donations coming in. Now, there's a lot of, right now, a lot of food drives going on within different organizations that are continuing to go on throughout the year for Tabitha's Way. But we, as, sorry, myself and our Board of Directors got together and said, well, what can we do? Because we see more families coming in during the summer, but typically less food drives. And that's a common thing for food banks and food pantries. So, through our brainstorming session, we thought, okay, what happens during the summer? And what came from that was, oh, city celebrations. So, we had two asks. One, we were asking Mapleton City to consider in future city celebrations, maybe incorporating a day of service that would maybe do a citywide food drive that would help us collect food during the summer months for our food pantries. Also, we'd also like to ask Mapleton City if you'd consider on September eleventh, Day of Service, which is a statewide day of service, if you would consider a food drive during that event. So, either or, and, whatever. But just calling attention to the need of the food items and just ask if that would be something that you may put on your agenda to consider. And if that's something you'd like to do, we would love to help coordinate something like that if that's something you want to do in the future. So, but just a need that our food pantries are seeing and asking our community to help. Another way that citizens can help is, right now, as you're planting your gardens, plant an extra row. We can take that fresh produce. If you have those odd-shaped zucchinis or vegetables, we will love them. So, please, or your fruit trees, please drop them off at our food pantry. We can accept those items. So, that's all I had. Any questions for me?
If we were to do a food drive, I know that there's two pieces to the food drive from a city perspective. Clearly, I think we can all agree the need, there's a need for all of us to do our part to. And there's a great opportunity for the city to announce or communicate the food drive. Is there help from your organization to come and get the food and transport it? Because you can see that creates a burden on city staff to pack it up, take it down. So, what does that look like if we were to say, yeah, let's just include that as part of one of our events? What does that look like for you to help organize that?
Absolutely. We are food drive professionals. So, yes, we have a box truck. We have containers. We have these big containers that actually can hold up to twelve hundred to sixteen hundred pounds of food. We also have barrels. We have staff that we would dedicate towards that. We also have templates and we also have like food drive packets that kind of talk about what's needed most and all those things. We would one hundred percent would love to coordinate that, provide the information and coordinate like the templates for, you know, letting people know and what's needed, what we can accept, what we can't, and actually do the pickup and all of that coordination. We would love to work with the city and partner on something like that. So, yes.
I will say, I had, I've been to Tabitha's Way one time. You may not remember me because you meet with six thousand families throughout the year. I went down there about a month ago with an Afghan family who had recently appeared in our neighborhood and with their five kids in tow. And that was my first experience at Tabitha's Way. And it was really your staff and your organization. It was a great experience and a really incredibly great resource for our community. And I was grateful to have a place to be able to take them just so easily.
Oh, well, thank you. And we are honored to do this work. We're really grateful, really grateful. And so, yeah, a lot of seeing a lot of families like that right now.
For the produce growing in the garden, are there any special packaging requirements for that or any special instructions?
No, just don't cut it. So, don't refrigerate or cut it. Just bring it straight off the vine. So, and we will wash it and clean it and hand it out. It's nice if you wash it first, but, you know, if you don't, we'll clean it and hand it out. So, but produce is a food item that's considered self-contained in its own, so we can accept that. We also can accept eggs. So, if you have chickens, we can accept your eggs. So, that's one of the things we can take. So. Anything else?
Great. Any other questions for Wendy? All right. If that's it, Wendy, thanks so much. Thanks for doing what you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right, we'll start now with our consent agenda. The approval of the minutes and then also franchise agreement with Rocky Mountain Power. We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll take it. We have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilman Carlson.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
All right. Mayor and Council, just before we move on, our regional manager for Rocky Mountain Powers here this evening, Debbie.
Oh, Debbie.
And any questions for her? If she's the one that helps us, if we have any topics or issues, we reach out to her. This last week, we kept her busy with some power.
Thanks for getting her power back on quickly. Appreciate that.
Oh, yeah.
If it goes on longer than five minutes, you'll hear from us. So, just remember that. Other than that, I don't have any questions, you guys?
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Awesome. Thanks for all the power. All right, we're going to move to item number three, which is a public hearing item. Consideration of request to apply a transfer of development right receiving site overlay, TDR, to a property located eleven eighty-five West and twenty-four hundred South. And before we turn over to Sean, I think Casey, you want to?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. I live one house to the west of the applicant and I don't have a conflict of interest, but out of respect to Ralph and Tangi, I'll not participate in the discussion, at least from this side, but on the other side. And so, I won't vote on this issue today.
Okay. With that, Mr. Conroy?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, with Councilmember Beck stepping down and, you know, we just heard from Councilmember Garrett the other night that he obviously was unable to attend. That means that tonight's vote needs to be unanimous if it's going to pass one way or the other with the three council members that are here. If you can't achieve a consensus vote, it would get continued until we have, until we have a full quorum. So, I'll go through my presentation. I'd recommend you hold the public hearing and then the council can deliberate and see if there's a consensus. If not, we need to move it to a future meeting. So, this project is on a two-and-a-half acre site in the A-two zone. The lot is not part of a platted subdivision, but kind of all the lots around it have been subdivided and platted. The applicant is requesting approval for a TDR receiving site overlay to create one additional building lot. You may recall in two thousand and twenty, we had a TDR application for a property just to the northwest of here that was ultimately denied by the council. So, this is the aerial of the site. You see the applicant's property in yellow on the screen. This is the current zoning. So, the majority of the properties are zoned A-two, which is the two-acre minimum. And then the general plan, this is a little bigger, blown-up version, or a little pulled-out version of the area. So, most of the neighborhood stays in that A-two or that rural residential with kind of the periphery in the one-acre zones kind of to the north, south and to the west. TDR applications are legislative in nature, as you know. So, it's really, you really have broad discretion to approve or deny TDR applications. The TDR ordinance does identify the A-two zone as a receiving site as long as the parcel is not platted. So, in this case, the parcel is not platted and is in the A-two zone. So, it's eligible to apply for the receiving site. Some of the other criteria in the ordinance indicates that the decision to approve it should be consistent with the TDR ordinance and the general plan. And then also to look at the compatibility of the surrounding area. So, that's kind of the focus of tonight's discussion. If you've read through the comments and looked over the public hearing, that's really kind of where the, most of the debate is, is how will this impact the neighborhood? And that's what the commission or the council should focus on with their discussion. This exhibit just shows the areas in yellow, all kind of on the periphery, and then the applicants kind of in the middle are properties that could apply for a TDR overlay in the future. And then this exhibit just shows the applicant's property in blue and those around it that are already platted and couldn't apply for a TDR overlay. If that makes sense. So, that concludes staff's remarks. If you've got any questions for me, I'm happy to go through those. Otherwise, you could open it to the public.
Perfect. If there's no initial questions, we'll have the applicant, if he has anything to add, he's welcome to come forward and do that now. If you'll state your name, please, Ralph.
Ralph Walpole. And good to be here. And I want to congratulate you too, being a member of the Water Board. I got to see some of the work that was done by the city and the flooding and all that. And thank Sean for helping me out with my lack of technical or electronic ability, but.
Hey, Ralph, with that, with that technical ability, would you mind pulling that mic a little closer?
There we go.
There you go.
So, our plan, just, and if I have, if you have any questions when I'm talking, feel free to jump right in and I'll, we'll try to answer them. So, the idea is to divide the parcel property north and south. So, up on the map, it would be up and down. I would divide it right between my house and my shop. The house would have an acre of property and then the shop would be an acre and a half. And I'd build the house next to the shop. No frontage issues. It's on a corner. I've got six hundred and sixty feet of frontage. Just, just really quick, I wanted you, let me hand these out real fast to you.
That's okay. I got it.
So, this, this is a picture of the fields behind my house. And fifty-some-odd years ago, I'd play around in those fields right there. That picture was taken thirty-four years ago as I dug the foundation of my house. That's what it looked like at the time. So, nothing was there.
Is that a front-end loader you were digging with? What is that?
That is. It's my front-end loader, nine-ten cap.
Nice.
So, as you can see, there's nothing behind there. And we built, just built our own property. We didn't have to subdivide because we had enough acreage. Built our house over the next several years. Property around us sold. Developers bought it and used, exercised their development rights and developed the property. We knew they had the right to do so and welcome new neighbors in like we, like we always have for the last fifty-plus years that I've been in Mapleton. So, then, as we build our house, knowing that someday that it'd be hard, a little bit harder to take care of the property, when the TDR ordinance was introduced, that gave us an opportunity to purchase a TDR, put a twenty-year plan together to go ahead and use our development rights at this time. It's now twenty years has passed to go ahead and divide our property with the idea that we would be able to remain in the area, remain in the neighborhood that we helped to grow and the one that we help, that we love. And it's unfortunate, but we've seen several elderly neighbors have to sell and move out because of their inability to take care of two-and-a-half acre lot. The best part about this is we are completely surrounded now by four separate subdivisions. We have become a literal island. If we look at this, as far as a good opportunity to use a TDR, there's none better in the city. It's completely surrounded by developed property. So, it cannot affect any of the neighbors. All that property is already in subdivisions and we're not, again, it will not show up as an RA-one lot. It will show up as a TDR-R, which is a receiving, TDR-receiving. That's what it will say on the plot. It's unlike any of the other subdivisions that have come forth in our area. Ours, this one is completely compliant with every general plan ordinance, zoning, frontage, everything. One house will be added on eighty acres worth of subdivisions. It cannot affect the zoning in those subdivisions as, as they are locked in and cannot receive the TDRs. Just real fast, I've got my copy of my TDR here. I just wanted to read what it says on top of it. It says, "Development right." Each development right is worth one additional developing unit when transferred into authorized development areas. As Sean mentioned, the A-two is the receiving area. And here in section eighteen point seven-six of the TDR, it says, "Receiving areas shall be located exclusively within the A-two and RA-one zones." Like I was saying, there isn't a better area for the TDR to be used. When these TDRs was introduced, I, I was a little bit apprehensive that they weren't liking the project, knowing that it would free up a lot of land along the bench and other areas. And that has happened. There's seven hundred and eighty acres that is now open space because of the TDR program. Yes, it has been a little bit of a pain for you guys to try to decide where they go. But that pain has paid off. We, we would probably have areas more on the north end of town of what's happening up on the Bonneville bench. But, but the TDR program has been good. I just want, I just wanted to read one, if I can find it here, one part of the TDR ordinance. And it's, this says the purpose. The purpose of the TDR overlay zone is to promote the preservation of agriculture lands, rural open space, scenic vistas, critical and central lands. The general plan, as important to preserve and for the benefit of the citizens of Mapleton City. So, if you look at it, four hundred and eighty TDRs were created, seven hundred and eighty acres of open space. That's roughly one point six acres per TDR. If you add the one point six acres to what I'm doing, you still have four acres out there that is, that is open space. But the best part about it, it's up on the bench somewhere and for everybody's enjoyment. Again, just to reiterate, everything that we've done is completely within the city ordinances and the TDR overlay. We've been in the overlay zone. It's been our twenty-year plan. This plan wasn't developed by us just six or eight years ago when a lot of our neighbors moved here. This has been a twenty-year plan. The TDR program, as you know, how long has it been, Sean? Twenty-four?
Nineties.
Twenty, almost four years. So, the citizens, neighbors moved in that may be objecting to what we are trying to do here, came here, accepted the ordinances that are in place by the city and accepted the area in which they live. The biggest concern, and hopefully you guys can put those concerns to rest, is that they think for some reason it will create a precedence that other people can do the same thing in the neighborhood. And of course, that is completely false. The neighbors that I've talked to. The neighbors that I've talked to, they, especially at first when I mentioned what we're gonna do, they have no problem with us building one house and, and someday retiring and, and staying here, like I said, in the city that I helped build and that I love. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ralph, right now?
Not yet. Okay, Ralph, thanks for your presentation.
And I, and I'd like to be able to come up after and answer any.
Yeah, we'll bring you up if we get questions for you, for sure. Thanks, Ralph. All right, now, this is a public hearing item, so now we'll open it for public comment. So I know there's probably a lot of you spoken, or spoken to each other and, and whatnot. And I don't know, I've spoken to a couple of you briefly, but if you, if, in, in the respect of time for all of you and whatnot, if you have the same concerns, whatever, and they're addressed, then we'll take a thumbs up from you and then you don't have to get up and, and say the same thing over. But anyway, so we'll open it for public hearing and go forward, come forward. If you'll just state your name first.
Hello, everybody. Brett Hanson. I live two houses to the west. So it's Ralph, Casey Beck, then me. It's where I live. I, I get nervous with all these people.
That's why I said, Brett, you let some bills do it for you?
Seriously, I should just, just sit down.
It's the worst standing at that thing, I tell you.
The worst. Um, I, you know, you got a lot of things going through your head for me, and I'm, I'm sorry, Eric, thank you for being patient with me and taking, taking your time and listening to me. Mumble up here. But there's a couple of things that, and, and I, I was listening to Ralph, and I, and I understand, and maybe you can help me unders, understand, he was saying that it wouldn't affect the other neighbors, 'cause he's an island, but just across the street from me is the Christiansons, that's, he lives at Christiansons directly north of me. And just a few years ago, you guys all voted against this exact thing we're voting against today. I don't know if you guys, you probably already talked about it, I came in late. So to me, it's the exact same, it's the exact same issue we're, we're voting against. The Christiansons are not in a subdivisions. The Cofer's are not in a subdivision. So I don't under, when, when Ralph says that it wouldn't affect anybody, to me, that affects me directly, right across the street, 'cause if they're not in a subdivision, and Ralph's not in a subdivision, Cofer's aren't in a subdivision.
I want to clarify though, Sean, that one last, and I remember that very clearly.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, that application was for a rezone and a TDR overlay, is that correct?
It was.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
It was asking for a rezone and TDR, so I just want to make that.
Right.
Clarify that for myself.
Which it was, it was zoned one acre, and since then, we've zoned it to A2.
Yeah.
Right. So now it's zoned. And like Ralph was saying, we, we moved here, I moved here ten years ago, two thousand thirteen. You know, I'm, I was thirty-one years old. Young guy, worked, working, working the, working the yard. And I bought it from an older gentleman, which couldn't take care of the land, which is fine. And he moved into a nice place in Payson, great. And it was still a great property. I do know there's a couple one-acre places just right across the tracks, all over in Mapleton, so you can still see him being in the same neighborhood in a one-acre property, where it wouldn't affect our, our neighborhood. 'Cause you can get one-acre lots everywhere, you can't get two-acre lots. I mean, if you go around and you can't get two-acre lots around there. Anyway, so I'm obviously against it. That's my point of view. After your, after the decision tonight, I, I was wondering if I could bring up a different subject, which I know you can't make tonight, but I was wondering if we could adopt the Walpools, Christianson, and Cofer's subdivision in our subdivision? Because to me, they're my neighborhood. To me, they're my neighbors, they're across the street. And on paper, it says they're not in a subdivision, which would not allow to do a TDR. So I propose that we, in a later meeting, we adopt them into subdivision. I talked to Sean about that, and he said to bring it up with you guys.
Okay.
So.
Great.
Great.
Thanks, Brett.
Uh-huh.
Appreciate it, good job. You did better than you probably thought you would. Wasn't that bad, right? We're not that scary. There we go, awesome.
So my name's Michelle Wicks. My property is on twenty-six hundred. We are located southwest of the Walpools. So I have my talking points here, so hopefully I can get through them all and go sit back down. So first off, kind of, the, the elephant in the room is it's very awkward to be up here speaking against a neighbor and something that they want to do, especially somebody that we have enjoyed as much as, as the Walpools. I mean, we literally see them every day. So just get that out of there. So the origin of the, the TDR program, you know, and it's been a while, was because there were areas in Mapleton that were deemed, you know, unique and precious and of benefit all. And so those were to be protected. And now that we are, you know, twenty-something years, that line has moved, and I would argue that what needs to be protected is A2 zone. And that's what you guys said with the master plan. It had gotten, it was wrong a little bit, it had gotten kind of rolled back, and I feel like that is something that maybe atten, enough attention hasn't been drawn to. So Mapleton talks a lot about rural feel. Well, that's what we have right there, right there. And a TDR application does change the feel of that neighborhood. The usage between one and two-acre lots cannot be overstated. You know, it, it's vastly different, the, the agricultural use that that's currently being used for. So, you know, and, and it's, there's a lot of, of weight here with this. Once that gets applied, it, it, it can't be rolled back, you know? And that neighborhood, as, as it is, will be changed, and everybody's gonna be impacted. It's not just people that live there, we have people that, you know, ride bikes up and down that street, people walk along there. I mean, everybody benefits from the beauty and uniqueness that's down in that neighborhood. So I think that that's worth preserving at the discomfort of the Walpools. So, you know, and we're not unsympathetic to aging neighbors and increasing property values. That is something that we have considered. How do you balance that with the neighborhood as it's established right now? And I think the answer is kind of, as far as bringing in new growth, is you sort of feather it around on the outside, the areas that are still to be developed, you don't put it right in the middle of where we're currently already living. So, so I think that it would be... There, there's just, there's, there's a lot of weight to this. I know to you guys, it maybe seems like, you know, a good use or just, just one, one TDR, but the, the whole community down there is affected by this, and is, is already affected by this. I've lost sleep over this, you know? So that, that's how strongly I feel that this is going to change that neighborhood and encourage. I know that the idea is, is that it's going to set a precedence in that neighborhood. I think the idea is that it's gonna, it might be encouraging increased density around the edges, because you can point to that, there's already one acre. So I think that, that's where it kind of becomes quite a bit more worrisome. So, anyway, that's kind of all I have to say, and I wish you all the best of luck with this.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Real quick to clarify, you made a comment about the difference between a one acre and a two-acre lot, and the use of the property is vastly different. I just want, I was wondering if you could clarify that. And I understand if, you know, a oil refinery is going in next door, the use of the property is very different.
Sure, so the majority...
Help me understand what you're, what you're meaning by that.
The, the majority of that A2 zone is farms. People use it for agricultural purposes, either growing hay, large livestock, things along those natures. When you have a one-acre lot, it becomes kind of a big house, and then you have like a half acre left over. You could do large livestock, and they're, they're zoned for it, but people just don't seem to. And so it becomes just like a big garden, or kind of a different, different sort of usage.
So you're more comfortable if your neighbors are using it for the same purpose that you're using yours for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, and it, I mean, and it's, you know, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, and it brings in, like, you have the sights and the smells and livestock getting loose. You know, if a horse gets out, most people are gonna know what to do, how to handle that situation who are already there. So somebody buying a one-acre house, or, you know, a, a large house, not anticipating maybe all of that, and how interconnected we really are, you know, then that, that might be a problem.
Sure.
So.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just read mine. My name is Lynette Cornaby. I live west of Brett Hanson. I am grateful for this process. I've been here on a few issues, and I appreciate the careful consideration that you give each issue that we bring to you. We live in a great neighborhood. Each family in our neighborhood has a story of how they came to the area, how they chose their house, and why they want to stay. We like our neighbors and our space and our rural atmosphere. We naturally don't want someone messing things up. No one likes change. I believe very few of us have seen as much change in our area as the Walpools have. They know the history and watched the process that allowed our neighborhood to be built. They know, and we know, things change. We have felt the contention in our neighborhood these past couple of months. I'm hoping that whatever the outcome, our peace and good feelings for each other will return. I have a few reasons why I chose not to sign the letter opposing Ralph and Tangi splitting their lot, and I'll briefly share them. First, I can't base my decision on future unknowns or future assumptions. The fear that having smaller lots on our street will set a precedent for future dense housing has been repeated often. That truly is a possibility, but our decision today is about one lot, one more house on the street, not the future developments that may or may not come to pass. One more house, one more family in the neighborhood will not change my way of life. I trust completely our ability as a community and a neighborhood to band together as we have in the past, to fight any future developments that we don't approve of at the time they are proposed. Second, I trust God has a plan. I have heard multiple times from President Kellin Mills and other leaders that God is bringing people to Mapleton who need to be here. People who need our influence and people whose influence we or our families may need. I have prayed, and I'm sure most of us have prayed, about the Walpools proposal and how we should respond, and I trust that God has heard our prayers and will continue to take care of us. Lastly, it is the people that are important. Several years ago, my husband and I found ourselves in a similar situation as the Walpools are in right now. Our near neighbors didn't like the way we were using our property and made us feel very unwelcome. We nearly uprooted our family and business and moved to North Dakota to start over. I don't want to make Ralph and Tangi feel unwelcome in their own neighborhood. Fortunately, in our case, my husband and I found a different solution that satisfied our neighbors and benefited our families, so we didn't leave. And since then, we've had a pretty good relationship with those neighbors. No matter what decision is made tonight, I feel that people are more important. Thank you.
Wow. Thanks on that. That was great. I think next time you should make Chad deliver that message on that. Make him pay.
My name's Eric Moss. I don't live in the neighborhood, but I do own property in Mapleton. But first of all, I, I, as I'm sitting there, the question that keeps coming to my mind is this, hey, we want to keep Mapleton rural, we want to keep Mapleton rural. Who's more rural than Ralph Walpole? I mean, there's probably three people that cut hay in town still. Ralph's one of those guys. Do we want to see the tractors keep going up and down the road? Yeah, we do. And Ralph is gonna do that, living in the neighborhood. There's nobody that does more rural stuff in this community than Ralph. And the things that he's teaching my kids, priceless. But as someone that owns property in Mapleton, I also ask you to look at this as a whole community. It's opened up seven hundred and eighty acres for everyone to be able to benefit from, not just one neighborhood. Also this year, we saw massive amounts of snow. I can only imagine how many more deer and elk we would have saw in town had we not opened up those seven hundred and eighty acres. So I ask you to look at that as a whole, that it's not just about one neighborhood, it's about the whole community. But Ralph truly is one of the last that is truly rural, rural. So, thank you.
I'm Casey Beck. I live twelve-twenty-five west, twenty-four hundred south.
Just answer one question for me.
Great.
How do we look from down there? Is it what you imagine?
Amazing, actually.
Really?
You look really good.
All right, all right.
So I want to show a PowerPoint. Sean said I could at least pass out something, someone had to do that. To echo some things that have been said, Ralph is, is Mr. Mapleton to me, right? And he's Mr. Rural. And that's, we all want to be like Ralph. Like, honestly, I love seeing the alfalfa, I love seeing the motorcycles. But that, that's why there's been some hurt a little bit, because I want the same things for my kids that Ralph got for his kids. Three and a half years ago, our neighborhood was involved in the process of updating the general plan. And the general plan, of course, is meant to protect property owners' rights, not, not just those that are applying for developments, for, for development, but those around as well. We did what we could then to express our opinions and protect our rights. We were very adamant in the process. We were adamant about our neighborhood staying two-acre lots for neighborhood. And three years ago, the applicant in the northwest, northwest property, and, and actually two years before, that's a different owner, they applied for a zone change and a TDR That, that lot abuts, I think it's about twenty acres of farmland. This one is surrounded by lots in the subdivision. The planning commission three years ago denied the zone change and the TDR request. Oh, sorry, they, they denied the zone change, oh yeah, and TDR request five years ago, but three years ago, they just denied the zone change but approved the TDR request. And I remember being at that meeting and being a little frustrated because they kept on saying the word compromise, they just wanted to compromise with the applicant, and deny half the application but approve the other half. At the city council meeting in two thousand and twenty, we presented a large petition that was signed by every property owner within a half mile to keep our neighborhood as two-acre lots. And you heard us, and you voted against the zone change and the TDR request, and we appreciate that you did this. But we also appreciated what you did after. You changed the general plan map to keep, to keep consistent zoning in our neighborhood. And that's something we don't mention too often, but I, I really appreciate that, that you went extra and above and beyond to protect our neighborhood. I know we talk about precedent, and it's not a word that we like to, to pull up sometimes, but what honestly is, what, what's, what's the significant changes between these two properties that are, that were being applied for? One abuts farmland, one is in the subdivision. One was a property owner that just barely moved in, and the other's a property owner that's grown up in Mapleton. So I, I get that there's changes in reason, reasons, but I don't, I don't see a, a significant reason to vote for this one, and, and to, to vote for this one but against the one three years ago. So here we are again, and we're asking you again to keep our neighborhood intact and follow the general plan policy 2.1, which states to maintain and protect established neighborhoods. It doesn't say maintain and protect subdivisions, it says neighborhoods. And our neighborhood, we are a neighborhood. Yes, some of us are not in the subdivision, but we are all one neighborhood. The planning commission, they decided to stay consistent to their 2020 decision and just passed the decision on to the city council. We hope that you'll stay consistent to your 2020 decision as well. We're not saying that Mapleton needs to stay this way all, all the time, right? We're not saying that we want Mapleton to go back to what it was 20 years ago. But we're, we're wondering and hoping that at least some parts of Mapleton can be preserved and protected. So we talked a lot about open space, maintain the rural feel, small town, big heart. This is what the general plan is basically about. And we are one of three rural neighborhoods with an A two designation. There's a unique use of hobby farms and homesteading. There are very few properties within Mapleton that accommodate lots of animals, large animals, or even slaughtering those animals. We're not saying that if you allow this zone change and TDR, or we're not saying that if you allow this one TDR request that it's going to ruin the neighborhood as we know it. It's not that, but it will introduce more zone changes and TDR or, or applications for zone changes and TDR approvals over time. And having gone through the, I, I didn't go through this, but you guys all went through the, the, the changing of the, of the general plan. And when you did that, you looked at where our one acre lots were, two acre lots. And if there are three or four one acre lots in our neighborhood, a future planning commission, a future zoning, a future city council could look at that and say, yeah, we should just zone the whole area for one acre lots. With all the talking in the general plan about preserving the rural atmosphere and heritage, shouldn't we protect these three rural neighborhoods, especially if the property owners are asking for that? What more could we do to keep our neighborhood two acres? And again, I know this is only one TDR request, only one extra house. Very insignificant to you, but it means the world to us. A TDR certificate is not tied to a property. There are 80 TDRs left and a lot of undeveloped land still for use of, of these TDRs. I, I'm not sure the exact number of acres around Mapleton, but there is a lot of farmland still that are better locations for TDRs. The mere existence of the TDR ordinance means that there are locations that are appropriate for TDRs and locations that are not. And with so many other better opportunities for TDR receiving sites, why disrupt an existing neighborhood? The code, the general plan, the ordinance make it clear that those sites are more appropriate for TDRs in undeveloped land. Conforming, so conforming lots to this surrounding area is also an appropriate use of TDRs. And this, this first page here, two months ago, the city council approved a TDR request in the yellow box here. It was one acre lot, 739 South 800 West. So the approval was to divide a one acre property and conform it to the half acre lots all around it. And this is what you want TDRs to do, to conform it to the neighborhood. This does, does not, it does the opposite, of course. So is this an appropriate location for a TDR? The answer was no in 2020, and it is still no in 2023. It does not conform to the neighborhood, it does not protect an existing neighborhood from development. It makes an island development. It's not smart planning, there are adverse effects to the neighbors, and it's not desirable. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey.
This is kind of nerve wracking.
Just your name for Camille.
Last name's Dell, first name's John. It's Cameron Rich. Thanks for the sandbags. Love that guy. I want to say thanks to Sean. Sean's the very best you could ever get. I think I've emailed him 500 times in the last two years, no joke. I literally set up our burner email account because I didn't want him to know that I was still emailing him.
Think I've actually read emails from you and never met you?
I, I accidentally signed my burner account with Cameron once, but it was Dave. So. True story. Anyway, I, I probably know more about TDRs than anyone here. I have literally 150 pages of Word docs because I was going to fight my own battle. And I looked at every TDR scheme in Utah. I looked at every court case that has ever existed for, for TDRs. And initially, because I'm kind of pro TDR, I wanted to TDR my own land. I also was watching this because I wanted to run for city council, but I didn't run. But that's part of why I was, I was watching it. But as I was kind of watching this, I initially was for them. In fact, I called them and I said, I called them about 10 times and I was like, hey, I can help you. They called me two weeks later and after I had done all my research, I actually, I tried to play dumb. I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. They're like, you left us voicemails that you could help us with, and I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. They're like, no, literally, you texted me that you'd help me. And I was like, sorry, I can't help you anymore. Because I changed my mind after looking at everything, despite wanting to be pro TDR and looking at everything that I'd done. And I've, I've got a couple of reasons. The first I'll say is I don't believe it's the best location. There are developments where, you know, they already, I know a developer that wants 20 TDRs. And, you know, his lot would change from 1.75 to 1.72 if he had another TDR. And those, those property owners would go into this knowing that there's, you know, that density. So I don't believe putting another TDR in the middle of, you know, two acres is the, is the right decision. Most importantly, I, this whole platted, unplatted subdivision kind of thing, I'm not going to delve into it, but some of you might know my opinion on it. I don't really think it's a, to, to let somebody subdivide their property in the middle of a neighborhood and then not let everyone around them based on, you know, this line that was put in some 30, it was 1992. It was, it was written a long time ago. I don't believe that's a fair rule. And I think that if the property was unique, you know, like when I wanted to fight my battle, I have three and a half acres and it was in two acres. So it's, you know, it's a debate for me. You know, I have three and a half, everyone else has two. When you have two and you're next to two, it's not unique. It's, I think it's very disruptive to the neighborhood. And, you know, I like to look at things, I'm not a lawyer, but I did study law for a little bit before I sold my soul to finance. And I believe if you rejected this and they tried to sue you, go to court, they would lose. But I believe with the right information, if you approve this, the surrounding neighbors could fight and could get their land rezoned to one acre, just based on what I know. So to me, I think that this is more, do you want to rezone the whole neighborhood one acre? Because I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think they have, you know, Sean's probably disagreeing, like, I don't know if that's true or not. You know, I'm not a judge, but I did read a lot about this. And so I think that, I think to me, it's, do you want to make the whole neighborhood, do you want to make the whole neighborhood one acre? I doubt you do. And because of the rule of platted sub, you know, platted, unplatted, that, that whole kind of thing, I don't think that it's a, I don't think that's something that you should be able to use to, to subdivide right in the middle of, of properties. So I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's right. I know that it's been spoken that, you know, they're in a receiving zone, they have the right to do it. I don't think they have the right to do it. I think if they had the right to do it, we wouldn't have this process. It would be automatic, like, hey, I have a TDR and I'm in a receiving zone, so it's automatic. It's not automatic. And the reason for that is because it needs to be in the right location. That was when they, when they made the rules in 1992, they put in a rule that it has to be unique. You know, it has to fit the, fit the area. I don't know what the sentence is, but there's a sentence in there, basically, you know, is it right? And they, I believe they put that in to prevent this type of situation. And lastly, what I'll say is that I think that if you vote for this, you're eliminating your chance to ever vote against another one. Because I don't think you can approve a TDR in the middle of a subdivision that's all two acres and then go and say no to anyone else. Because I don't, I don't see anything that would ever be more disruptive than this. So if I were somebody else, I'd say you approved, you approved a TDR right in the middle of the subdivision. How are you going to say no to me? Doesn't make sense. So if you say yes to this, you have to say yes to everything, in my view. If you don't, then you're, you're not being fair to the process. You're picking and choosing. So for me, I think that, I don't, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right for the neighborhood. It just, it's not logical either, you know, the, the whole idea. Like if you erase the rule from 1992, like everyone there has two acres and somebody can just pop another. It, it doesn't make sense for anything. So that, that's all I got.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thanks, Corey. Thanks again for the sandbags.
Corey, right?
Okay.
Fred Mostashari, 1210 West, 2400 South. I live right in front of Ralph. To start this, I've been here probably a few years shorter than Ralph, but I'm probably oldest living person in Mapleton after Ralph. I've been here since 1998. I've seen a lot of changes and I've fought a lot of fights in 2000, big development. Ralph did a change in the 1210 to a street that wasn't supposed to be part of deed to my property. And all that stuff, that's a past story, I don't want to bring that up. But in 1918, 19, 2018 and 2020, we put big fight, huge fight against development next door to me. In 19, 2018, I got 67 signatures. At 2020, I got 97 signatures. Not only our neighborhood, all the way up north and south, they signed against any development here. And here we go again. Ralph is a friend. He's been a friend for 24 years. We had fistfights, we had hamburgers, we have argued, and I love him dearly, I love Tangi dearly. So this is not personal. This is not about Ralph. This is about the decision, about the neighborhood. It's something that we already have made decision before. And I thought in my heart truly that 2020 was end of the story and we can rest. You guys promised me, I got up right in the stable, I said, is this it? Is this final? You all said, yes, anonymously. You're not, this is it, not going to happen again. And here we go again, going around the same circle. I love Ralph and I love what Ralph said. Ralph said, some people are getting old and moving out of neighborhood. Some are old, they cannot take care of their property. Well, I'm 74 years old, 20 years older than Ralph. Ralph got the same exact property as I do. Why he is able to divide and I can't. I'm 20 years older, I deserve more. If somebody needs money, I am. I'm in social security, I'm living, making ends meet roughly every month. So why is that? I don't know what happened 30 years ago when Ralph bought the property from Mr. Everett. And I don't know what happened when he built his property, he wasn't considered to be a subdivision. Mine is a subdivision of two, funny. You should go to the Guinness Book of Records, two houses and was subdivision. Richard, down the road, subdivision of one house. That's sort of ridiculous, isn't it? What does that mean? Subdivision of one house? So Ralph said, again, people are getting old and moving out. People are getting old, they cannot take care of it. But I can rip the benefit away, this TDR and divide my two and a half acre. But Fred in front, he's planted for two houses and he can divide his. Is that fair? Let me ask you another way. Is that ethical? I've worked 40 years for government, DOD and DOE. I'm not a politician. I don't understand all this platting and all this warm and fuzzy, fuzzy words. I am engineer of a nature and I look at it logically. Logic is the only thing means to me. He's right in front of you, same acreage, he can divide this, but I cannot divide mine. Makes a lot of sense, doesn't it, gentlemen, ladies? But Abby said, I'm not going to take your time. I think that you have very tough situation. Want to make a decision about what very wonderful individual, which I love dearly and I love Tangi. I have nothing against Ralph, I have to support him and he's supported me for 24 years. One question about the gentleman is not for Mapleton, he's wrong. We are not talking about the Mapleton. We are talking about this neighborhood. What happens in Mapleton, rest of the Mapleton, as he said, is nonsense, has nothing to do with us. Be here talking about our neighborhood. And this is not a character business testimony here against Ralph or for Ralph. Ralph is a wonderful person, we all know that. My tractor is not as big as his, mine is a little one. But I still work like hell to keep that property up clean and presentable and have my neighbors be proud of me. So with that being said, you have two choices. You grant Ralph, then you have to grant the rest of us, period. Or you don't grant them, you go back to what promise that 2018. Thank you very much, appreciate your time. And my wife is going to kill me because I promised her I'm not going to say anything.
Thanks, Fred. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Brendan Wicks. You heard from my wife a little bit earlier and she had to take off with our daughter. But I just want to make a few comments that touch on points that I haven't heard brought up. One, I actually grew up out in Colorado and my dad grew up in, in Provo and we'd come back many, many times a year and visit his parents. And we'd take Highway Six coming along and often we'd come through Mapleton. And I was 17, 18, I think, the first time I made that drive by myself and kind of meandered through Mapleton and fell in love with the, with the town. Because a neighborhood's just like this. It was very different back then. I mean, that was the late 90s before we had a lot of the housing boom, before Harvest Park and a lot of the really smaller lots and higher density went in. And that really is what drew me to Mapleton then. When I got married, I told my wife, I have always dreamed of living in Mapleton. And it worked out when we were looking to buy a house, that there was a two acre property in this neighborhood that, that was available. And it was kind of luck how we stumbled into it. And we're just from the bottom left corner, just diagonally down from the Walpools. This neighborhood is fairly unique in Mapleton. There are some that are collections of, of two plus acre lots, but there really aren't any that are two plus acre lots where people actively have livestock, grow alfalfa, cut hay and, and do farming and agricultural stuff. This is, is one of those few. And in 2018, we had a fight for the, the property to over on 2400. They, they pulled the permit after the planning commission because they saw the neighborhood united and realized they weren't going to win. Same property again in 2020 came here. And the request for that one was to subdivide it and to apply a TDR. And the council at the time said, no, we don't want to subdivide it and no, you can't apply TDRs. Neither of those. And they said that for a property that is really on the fringe of the neighborhood. And, and when we say the neighborhood, what we mean are 2400, which is the street along the top edge of the yellow box, 2600, which is just down and left of the yellow box, and 2620, which is down and then to the right of the yellow box. Those three streets are made up of approximately 30 lots. The oldest home on those lots was built 25 years ago. And every single lot is at least two acres and everybody uses their lots for agriculture. We accepted that at some point, development's going to come in and encroach and get closer. There's a lot of big lots, a lot of big farmland around and, and we're realists. What we would like to do is set the precedent at the edges instead of doing it right in the middle. Doing it in the middle does set a precedent. It's possible to replat existing subdivided lots. So the lot directly north of the yellow box is about four and a half acres and they could submit a request and stand in front of you guys and ask that you replat the lot and convert it somehow. It happened across the highway when the whole neighborhood came in. But talking with Sean, he, he let me know that you don't have to have the whole neighborhood. That lot is actually at the corner of the subdivision. And so they could make the argument that replating and letting them go smaller makes them consistent with the half acre lots to the north of them and with the newly formed one acre lots to the south of them. And so it's a desirable thing. And it doesn't impact the existing subdivision because they're at the corner. So it absolutely does set precedent. So it absolutely does set precedent. And I would ask that you vote no now, which isn't a no forever, it's just a no until later and we have more data as to what the perimeter and the fringes are going to look like. Let's make that decision when we know what the entire area will look like rather than starting in the middle and letting the dominoes fall how they will. Thank you.
Thanks Brad. Any more?
Howdy, Nick Glasgow, 1140 West, 2620 South, live just south of Ralph Walpole. There's been a lot of talk about the signatures that were made on this 2020 fight that we were all in. That's the letter that we wrote, there's 90 signatures on it. And there's been a lot of compare and contrast between the five year ago fight, the 2020 fight and this one. But the one thing that I would like to bring up on that letter is the last line which I highlighted. 90 neighbors signed that letter, including the Walpools, including the Cornobees, including the Daybells, including myself, 90 families. I do agree, our neighborhood's made up of 34, so it's pretty much everybody. And it says, we prefer to keep zoning at a two acre minimum. That's what it says. That's what that letter says. And everybody signed it in 2020. So we have a common theme in our neighborhood, it's the way that we live. Leslie brought up land use. Her question was, what can you do on one acre, or what can you do on two acres that you can't do on one acre? Well, I don't think it's that simple. Our neighborhood is not just simply all two acre lots. 35% of our lots in our neighborhood are three plus acres. That's three times the density that Ralph would like to do. 26% of them are four plus acres. And land use, the Daybells run an active sheep farm directly across the street. It's amazing, it's great, my kids love to go over there and watch sheep be born. Ralph runs the largest agricultural business in our entire neighborhood. He has seven tractors, he has a hay truck, he does that on two and a half acres, not on one acre, that's a difference. He stores all of the hay that he cuts in town in huge piles on his property until big rigs can come and pick up that hay. On the north, the southeast corner, the grigs have seven acres and they run a horse farm on it. There is a huge difference in our neighborhood of what you can do on one acre versus what you can do on seven, what you can do on five, what you can even do on two and a half. And on Ralph's property alone, the own applicant, he uses his land to a use now that he's not gonna be able to use at one acre. Seven tractors, a huge pile of hay, it's not compatible.
Can I ask you, just since you mentioned my name, Nick? My question really is targeting, and you even kind of alluded to it, he's not gonna be able to do on one what he can do on two, but maybe he doesn't want to do that anymore. Maybe he doesn't want to do that. And so my point being, if someone lives on a one acre lot and they just want to have chickens in a garden next to somebody's sheep farm, is that okay? Or is there a problem with it? That's really the question.
I think the decisions for you to decide whether they're compatible or not. I don't think one family there is the issue. There's a whole morat of other issues that get brought up with losing the cohesiveness of our neighborhood, the density, the protections that we have in A2 and that are all intertwined in the decision making that you have to do. And getting to that, there is a decision that actually has to be made. He said multiple times he has the right to develop, the right is a process. He has a right to a fair and equitable process. This process is lined out by law and it has to make sense. And you guys get to decide in Mapleton City Code Section 1876-80, it says that you guys will review TDR requests and there's five bullet points on how you'll make those decisions. Four says, is it consistent with the recommendations of the City General Plan? And, it says the word and, and then it goes to number five, it says, it's a 16 word statement that make or breaks this whole decision. Achieves a desirable development compatible with both site conditions and surrounding existing and proposed future development. Achieves means that the obligation is put on the applicant, that his proposal to change something achieves this goal. He needs to bring the burden, he has the burden. Desirable is a very specific word. Desirable means that it's pleasant. It doesn't just mean it obtains, it actually says the word desirable. It says that it is compatible with both site conditions and surrounding existing and proposed future development. In our neighborhood, there is no proposed future development to discuss. So the only thing you can look at is the land use and the future planning of those lots surrounding. But there is existing neighbors and 90 of them are very passionate about A2 and the lifestyle that we have. Above, in the process, the one through four step, four says is consistent with the recommendations of the Mapleton City General Plan. And the general plan, goal number two says, continue the established focus on large lots, single family residential uses as the primary means for preserving Mapleton's rural character. Under that, it says, policy 2.1, maintain and protect an established residential district and neighborhood. This is an established residential district and neighborhood. We are a family. We all have one common theme. We may be in five subdivisions, we may have five lots that aren't in subdivisions, but we all are a family, we all go to church together, we all hang out together, we all party together, we all live in the same neighborhood and we all are two plus acre lots. That's the common theme. Goal number three in the general plan under land use says, ensure that the uses are compatible. And that's where I talked to you about the land uses that are so varied between somebody having 4.5 acres and me having two. There are uses that are very different between those. The last section is 181210B, says guidelines for rezone requests to consider the adverse impacts on adjacent landowners. There are obviously many potential and real adjacent impacts on the adjacent landowners. This place is special, it's worth preserving. There's not a ton of them. Moved here from California, I'm one of the guys that supposedly was sent here to take over everything, develop it, make everything track homes. And here I am standing up trying to keep my two acre neighborhood and the way of life that I moved here for. I ask you to seriously consider protecting, preserving, keeping the cohesiveness of this little two street neighborhood, 31 lots, the way that it is. Let us have a little piece of paradise that is something special, something that is different than all of the other cities around us. Don't bring island development to the center of our city, please, and the center of our community that we so love. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks Nick. Glad we convinced you with that California mentality.
Hey, Bill Gammel, just wanted to come and voice my support for the TDR overlay application. So I think there's a few things that really need to be considered in this application. Number one, that this property, Ralph's property, is a meets and bounds description. It's never been through the plotted subdivision process, it's never had a legislative vote on it. And it's ironic that the people surrounding Ralph are all have been through that process. They've gone through the development process, they've gone to the city council, they've requested those and probably not them specifically, but the developers did at once upon a time. So Ralph's property's never been through that process and he deserves a right to be able to go through that process, just like every other parcel that's been plotted in Mapleton City in the history here. The other developments down the street are vastly different than this. They were applying for a rezone, that's significantly different than using a TDR to preserve property in another location of the city and apply it onto a piece of remnant parcels that was basically developed around. So when those plotted subdivisions happen, they're locked in unless there's an amendment to the plat and, you know, that's a legislative action that would have to come before you and you'd have to really weigh out if that's needed or not, like the west side of the highway and then what happened over there and then you make that decision there. So each one of these is very case by case. You can't set a precedence with simply doing this. There's rules and laws and city ordinances that you have to follow and that's what Ralph's trying to do. He's trying to follow the legal laws and ordinances, the ordinances of Mapleton City. And so I believe strongly in property rights. Grew up in Mapleton, I love this place. I moved to Springville, I bought property in Mapleton and have plans to move back here. And I love this place, but it is changing. It's different than when it was, when I was a young boy and was running from the cops on motorcycles in the streets and was in this room for honor purposes, answering to a judge of why I was running from the cops on my dirt bike. So things change, we all love the rural nature of Mapleton City, but we also need to respect people's property rights. And I think that's, you know, everybody shares that common goal in here of respecting property rights and I think that's the common ground that we can all find and hopefully make a decision that protects everybody's property rights here.
Thanks Bill. If there's no one else, then we will close the public hearing. I'll just say right out of the gates that not all public hearings I've been involved in have gone like this. And I greatly appreciate the respect that you show for each other and I echo the comments that Lynette made and I know we all aspire to be as nice as the Cornobees and I know most of us will never, at least I won't, ever get there. But I appreciate all the comments that have been made and the respect that you have for each other and for us, so thank you very much. Like I said, I've been in a lot of these that have not been similar to that, so thank you. And then we'll turn back to council if you have any questions or comments based on these comments that have been made or if you have any questions for the applicant or where you're at. We do have the instructions from Sean based on the unanimous vote that it has to be, so if there are strong feelings one way or another, then we could get those out now and discuss that and if you feel strongly one way or another, all three of you gotta be on the same page. If you're not, then we may be able to move this along quicker than not by, it would get moved to the next meeting. So I guess if you guys want to discuss kind of where you're at and what you're thinking, I'm gonna go from there.
Well, all right. I would also echo what Mayor said. This has been a very interesting thing to watch over the last several months with the planning commission, with the neighborhood, both sides. I just really appreciate the friendliness and civility. It's very clear that there is a strong affection in this special neighborhood and I value it, I admire it. And that comes from the Walpole side as well as the others. And so I'm hopeful that regardless of what decision is made tonight or if this, if this goes somewhere else and you all come back again, that this will stay. But for your sakes, I'm hoping we'll be able to resolve this and you can have fewer fistfights and more hamburgers, right? And I was here in the 2020 conversation and it was, while it was a bigger magnitude from geographic space decision, I don't know that it's any less important. So here's where I'm coming from. And I've gone back and forth actually quite a bit as I've listened to arguments. One of the things that's often hard as a council member is to suspend bias and suspend public outcry. We try and make our decisions grounded more in what is the ordinance, what does the code say, what is our intention and our goals of our general plan. And so sometimes that's hard because there's some heavy emotions on both sides of that and I just want to acknowledge that, I just, I value that, this is a very big conversation on both sides. One of the things I spend, and I don't mean to necessarily give a lecture from up here, but I think this is important enough that I wanted to talk through it instead of just vote without any kind of explanation. One of my roles on the council has a lot to do with legislative policy. I spent a lot of time on the Hill and working, working in fact this last legislative session on fighting legislation at the state level that would infringe on our ability as a city to place make, to define what we want our city to be and to preserve those things within our city as opposed to being prescribed quantities of density, to have our zoning challenged and eliminated. I spent a lot of time in the trenches on those issues. And so this issue particularly speaks to my interpretation related to legislative policy and code. And so for me, there's the technicality that was brought up between what is the neighborhood versus the subdivision in our ordinances. And perhaps that is some oversight from decades ago and perhaps the Walpools have fallen into something that was either oversight or whatever the technicality is. But historic oversight of a subdivision does not trump to me the concept of a neighborhood. And so for me, the TDR ownership is neither here nor there because a TDR, like we've talked already, is not attached to a particular piece of property, it can be used elsewhere, there are other opportunities to use that in the city. However, the technicality of a subdivision does not supersede the intentions of the TDR receiving sites or the general plan, specifically as I mentioned with the neighborhood compatibility. The property rights apply to all neighbors. And because of that, I would vote to deny the application. That's where I am.
I guess I could talk too then. I really appreciate the professionalism that everybody's showing here, even though there's a strong opinions both ways, it's very gratifying to know that we live in the community where we can have this type of a discussion and be civil about it. I've been on the, I guess, city council over six years and I think the hardest decisions that I make seem to deal with TDRs. I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not, but I think it's something that, you know, we all, you know, what is the best thing to do? What is the best thing for Mapleton? What's the best thing for the neighborhoods? What's the best thing to do? And it's always a challenge. Looking at both sides here and thinking about it and realizing the neighborhood you have, I kind of feel that I would probably vote against it too. So hopefully nobody takes that wrong, but anyway, that's kind of how I feel.
That's pretty clear, I don't know how we could take that wrong, Reed. I remember the 2020 conversation, that's when Jerika, when we became reacquainted, Casey, when I got to know Casey and his wife, I met with several of you during that time and I remember the details very, very clearly and felt very, very strongly against that application. And we won't rehash that for all of the reasons, but the bottom line was, hey, look, we don't want to have this road going here and we don't want curb and gutter down that road and it just changed the whole effect of the neighborhood. And that was that scenario with that zone change and the TDR overlay. In all transparency, I'm coming back and Nick, you did a great job with recounting the code, the language and the ordinance and so forth. And the one piece that I keep thinking about and have kicked around over the last number of weeks is the word conformity, is that the right word? The conformity around the neighborhood, the cohesiveness around the neighborhood, right? Keeping a cohesion around the neighborhood. And you may have noticed by some of my questions, I'm still trying to understand how having one acre in this zone prevents a neighbor from having horses or the Daybells from having sheep. Now, let me clarify that as well. One of the things I love about driving through that part of Mapleton One of the things I love about driving through that part of Mapleton that is unique, and I'm glad that this has been preserved, is the rural, the rural zone, right? No curb, no gutter, no sidewalk. It's very quaint. I love it. And I talked to Sean and I said, hey, this is on one of our first conversations, gosh, a long time ago. Just to be clear, no new house in this area has to put curb and gutter in, right? Nope, they don't. The other question was, and I talked with Casey a few weeks ago, and one of the concerns, and I think it's a fair concern, right? A fair question with, if people move in in a one acre and they're surrounded by sheep and pigs and this, and it stinks. And they start complaining and we don't wanna be dealing with neighbors complaining about what we do. Totally valid. You know what? There can be a disclosure or a stamp, a, a, what do you call it? A disclosure, a condition, if you will, on the plat where there is totally full disclosure for anybody moving into that neighborhood in anybody's lot. Hey, look, you're in an agricultural zone, right? It's kinda like that place down in, uh, Salem. You're buying a house next to a dairy farm and it stinks. Now, does that stop somebody from talking about the smell or anything? No, it doesn't. But all we can do is have as much full disclosure as possible to preserve one neighbor's way of life and hobbies and interest and another's, uh, on, on one that, as I see it, from my perspective, I don't see how that is not cohesive with the neighborhood, considering the aesthetic. There's no improvements that are gonna change. It does not impact a way of life from my estimation. For that reason, I'm going to make a motion to continue this item until there are more, um, until additional council members are present to cast a vote on this topic. Because there's no, there's, is not a unanimous vote.
So I'll second to continue it.
Okay, so before we move forward, Sean, just to be clear, this has been a public hearing item now. So the next time this comes before the council, is it just an action item?
Would be an action item, yeah. You've closed the public hearing. Um, if there's new information that's presented by the applicant, yeah, the public should be able to respond to that. But if it's just
The same.
You're just, yeah, we're just reviewing the same.
So I would say for those that are here, if, because it's being continued the next, uh, the next meeting, the public hearing stands the way it is. And Councilman, Councilman Garrett will have to get on and review it in preparation for the next meeting. And then obviously you're welcome to contact the council members and have those discussions and whatnot. All right, we have a motion?
To know to our next meeting scheduled for July 5th, recognizing that's, uh, close to a holiday. Is everyone, you three gonna be here for sure?
I'll be here.
I think so, it should be.
Okay. So let's, let's plan on that July 5th city council meeting.
We know if Faren will be
I don't know on that one. I'll check with him tomorrow.
Okay. All right, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilmember Egbert.
Egbert, yes.
Jones, yes.
Carlson, yes.
All right, um, you're welcome to stay the rest of the meeting, all of you. Invite you to, I guess Casey can come back up. And, uh, thanks again for your, uh, comments this evening. All right, we'll move forward, uh, with item number four. Looks like Bryce has got some heavy lifting here for the next, hopefully about three and a half minutes. So item number four is consideration of a resolution amending the current fiscal year 2022 and 2023 budget. Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have sent the amended budget to the council. It's been available for the public to look at. Um, this is a public hearing item. Um, so we'll, I'll be brief here. There was explanations in each of the amended items. Um, the only difference between what you have seen and what, uh, is being presented tonight is, um, the vehicle replacement has kinda been challenging to obtain the vehicles that we originally planned. Uh, we received quite a few trucks, um, and decided while we had the opportunity to purchase those, we ought to purchase those, uh, which postponed purchasing some other larger vehicles. So, uh, we're not necessarily increasing that budget. We're just moving funds around in that, in that item. Uh, the, the amendments that we have made will, will leave a surplus in the general fund of about $46,000. And then, um, that, that's, uh, as I mentioned before, we, we've given some explanations in, in each of those amendments. So I'll turn the time over to, uh, the public hearing and then council for any questions that you might have.
All right, this being a public hearing item, we'll open it for public comment. Seeing there are none, we'll close the public comment.
That's how you have a public hearing.
Any questions for Bryce and a motion?
You just mentioned that some of the larger vehicles were removed.
Uh,
what, what was removed?
So we'll have a, a VAC truck that's kind of, kind of in the air at this point. We're, we're still
Thought was a kind of important.
So, so I can address that, yeah. We, the VAC truck is still on its way. It was just a matter of, um,
Timing.
We had gotten word that it wasn't gonna come until, um, next fiscal year for sure. Um, it may actually come before, before the end of this month.
So we're not canceling it?
Yeah, it's not canceling it. It's just a matter of which, which fiscal year it gets paid out of, yeah.
That's an important track.
Yep.
It's a lot of money, but it's important.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman, um, J-, uh, my gosh. Beck and a second by Councilmember Jones.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Great. Number five is consideration of a resolution adopting fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget position list and fee schedule. Mr. Weller.
All right. Uh, again, we've, we've had the opportunity to review this budget. Um, for the public's information, I've met with most of the council members, uh, individually or, or as a committee. Um, they're very familiar with the budget. Um, uh, so as a, as a summary, the total general fund budget is $9,191,000. Of that, $425,000 would have been surplus. Uh, that's, uh, that amount will however be transferred to the capital fund project for future use. Um, uh, one point to make in the budget is there are four new positions being budgeted for. Um, two of those positions, however, uh, will not take action on until more information is, has been brought forth to the, um, to the wage and personnel committee and, and to you as well. If you're, if you're wanting the, uh, input or the information on those. Those two positions would be our HR officer and our full-time fire engineer. They're in the budget, um, but we're going to provide more information on, on those, uh, prior to posting those positions. Um, any que-
As I say, we just wanna make sure we get good input from all of you as a council, as well as the council liaison to a particular, um, department. Um, so we'll make sure, we're not posting those two items until, or until we've had some good discussion with, with each of you.
I'll just make a comment that I appreciate staff's willingness to meet with us and to, to get some of our thoughts and questions answered. And I, I've been, um, I, I feel like last year I, I didn't, um, wasn't as involved in the process. But this year I feel a lot better with it and I fully support the budget.
Thank you. One comment to that too, uh, um, been appreciated these last couple of, uh, weeks where it has some discussion pretty much with, uh, the majority of the council members. And our goal is, as department heads, is to, uh, meet with the council liaison. So whatever department that you work with and have our department heads, um, talk to you about the budget. So you're familiar with it. So like what Casey's mentioning there, that, that is a liaison to that, that department will be able to understand what some of the topics are within their particular, uh, department.
Uh, that being, uh, this being a public hearing item also, we'll open up for public comment. There is no public comment. We'll close the public hearing portion. Look for motion.
Just a question on the two open positions. They, they going to be filled? The anticipation sooner like late in the year, like six months you're gonna need them?
Okay, so just for, for clarification on that, um, there's four positions total, four new positions being budgeted. Two of those are with the fiber, uh, department, the MCN. Uh, they will be posted and, uh, probably already being worked on to, to have them, yep. Uh, and then the other two positions, the HR officer and the, uh, fire engineer, um, they will not be posted until we have more discussion.
And to your question as far as timing, um, I'm not sure. We're, we're still kind of working.
We budgeting for a full year of salary?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come in under budget on those, those items, but, but yes, they're budgeted for the full year.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2324 budget position list and fee schedule.
Second.
Her motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Councilman Beck.
Jones, yes.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Great. When we move to item six, which is consideration of a resolution adopting fiscal year 2023, 2024 certified tax rate. Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the county has, uh, provided a certified tax rate of point zero, zero, one, five, three, eight, um, which would provide a budgeted revenue for Mapleton City of $2,952,628. Um, this is the, the provided rate by the county. Obviously, we're not doing a truth in taxation. Um, so, uh, this is the, the certified rate that, that the tax commission has provided for us. Any questions on that?
The proposed rate is a little bit less than last year, isn't it?
That is correct. Uh, so what that indicates is that property values, um, have, uh, well, I had this prepared, so.
Increased.
Let's see. Property values have increased, so the rates decreased. Um,
Okay.
But the revenue of that has, has increased due to higher, uh, more, more homes, more, uh, more value there.
So when you get the funny joke, uh, you're never gonna reduce taxes, I got another, yeah, we did. Your dollar amount didn't go down, but we lowered that rate.
And, uh, just some, while we're all in the room, some commentary on that. Um, we, we could have maintained the rate, which would have been a truth in taxation. You're not increasing the rate. You're maintaining the rate. Um, so the budgeted revenue would have been higher, uh, by, by not increasing the rate. And then obviously we could have increased the rate. Uh, both of those options would have been truth in taxation.
All right, this being a public hearing item, we'll, uh, open it for public, uh, comment. There is no public comment. We'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2023, 24 certified tax rate.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Egbert and a second by Councilmember Jones.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Item number seven, consideration of a resolution to approve inter-fund transfers from water fund to the capital projects fund of 607,000. Sewer fund to the capital projects fund of 448,000. PA fund to the capital projects fund of eight, 83,000. Stormwater fund to the capital projects fund of 179,000 to pay for current and future year vehicle replacement. Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that is, that item is pretty straightforward. Uh, these will be transfers that will, uh, be for the purchase of capital, for the purchase of vehicles. And those vehicles will serve in the funds, uh, mostly from where those monies are being transferred. Um, which, which does include, uh, the, the stormwater fund. Uh, Rob, is that correct? That would be the, the, the VAC truck mostly. Um, so the, the VAC truck portion will come out of the stormwater. Um, and, uh, other vehicles will be purchased from those other funds. Um, any questions on that from the council? I, I do have the, the list of our planned vehicle replacement, um, if, if you're interested in that. Uh, but otherwise it's, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, this being a public hearing item also, we'll open it for public comment. Seeing there are none, we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the resolution of the inner fund transfers from the water fund. No. Okay. I'll, I'll just make a motion to approve item seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman, uh, Beck and a second by Councilmember Jones.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Carlson, yes.
All right, item number eight is consideration of a resolution to approve a sewer rate increase. Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the sewer rate increase, uh, when, when we discuss a sewer rate increase, typically we're referring to a sewer connected to one ERU. Um, that is kind of the main, uh, uh, connection that most residents have. Um, and that connection will increase by $10, uh, with this approval. And, um, the purpose of this, as stated, I believe back in 2020, is to, uh, help us get to a position where we can repay our principal and interest, uh, to the note that we entered into a Spanish fork, uh, for the, uh, sewer treatment plant. Um, the other, uh, connections, so one to, to 12 ERU rates will increase as well. Um, and I provided that information in the council packet. Uh, so I'll turn the time over to you.
All right, this also being a public hearing item, we'll open it for public hearing. For public comment, seeing there is no public comment, we will close the public hearing.
Do we have an estimated cost of this sewer plant yet?
Um, yes, we do. And I probably should know that off the top of my head and I don't.
124 something.
Yeah.
Mapleton's share.
So we, yeah, so we, we know the cost of the, of the treatment plant, um, they
Okay, so they have firmed it up anyway?
Yeah, yeah, they firmed it up. Um, I mean, there's always some risk that, uh, that with different changes. There's a, it's, it's a guaranteed maximum price within certain parameters, right? We can't, we can't totally change the design of the plant and, and have them stick to that. But, but it, it's a, that there's, there's not no risk, but it's a lower risk that, that, that's ever gonna increase. The, the bigger thing that we're looking through with, uh, with Spanish fork right now is that with those, um, emergency repairs that we needed to do on our, um, shared sewer trunk line, um, and the condition that it was in, they're, they're going through and, and, uh, looking at the condition of, um, the rest of the, of the sewer trunk line. And so, uh, if you see in there, we're, we're pausing the, the $10 rate increase this year. And we're estimating a $10, uh, rate increase next year. Um, and think that should be, you know, that should hold us, uh, for, for a long time. Um, but with, there are some, still some factors that we need to know before I can say, we, we know $10 will be good this year. Um, before I say exactly what the, the next rate increases and I need to get, uh, all the information, so.
Will it be this time next year that we'll have a hundred percent, this is, this is the total cost for it?
Uh, I just wanna when, when, when we'll know for sure what the final number is. After, yeah, ba- basically, I mean, when the, when the risk is totally gone and saying, we know exactly that it's not gonna go over this is, is basically when it's built. But yeah, we'll know, we'll, we'll know with, we know with good certainty that it's, that, you know, guaranteed maximum price is not gonna go over. We'll know with even more certainty next year, but I, I can't say that we'll know a hundred percent until it's done.
Our, our hope is that, um, I, I believe, uh, I, we may come back with completely different, different information. But I believe Spanish fork's going to be bonding, um, in about 2025. And, uh, we would hopefully be able to tack our portion onto that bond and, and create another inner local note with, with Spanish fork at that, at that point.
They don't have an option now, Bryce.
Yeah, we're, we'll get it.
Okay, this being
One thing to note, too, um, as noted in the staff report, uh, our, our residents will see this in their utility bill in August. And for the mayor's message in July, we're addressing this topic so that our, our residents are aware of this increase.
This being a public, go ahead. I already did that.
It's getting to be habit, so they should understand that we're gonna keep doing this every year for a while. It's a massive amount of money.
Yeah, it's also important to note that, that Mapleton is nowhere near the only city that's happened to raise the sewer rates for, for having to, yeah, redo, uh, sewer plants where Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Everywhere.
Multiple places have had to do this, so.
We'll blame our representative on the hill for not fighting that one. All by herself. We did do a public hearing then, okay.
I guess I could propose that we accept this item eight as a sewer rate increase?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Beck.
Carlson, yes.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
All right. Thanks, Bryce. We'll move to our last item, which is an action item, consider, consideration of resolutions appropriate available road funds for HA5 high-density mineral bond treatment. Mr. Hunter.
Yeah, so, uh, in the, um, packet, I put together what our planned roads are. Those are mostly, um, developments that have been done in the last few years and are, are a complete enough stage, um, to where we can, we can go in and, uh, and have Holbrook do their, um, HA5 high, high-density mineral bond. Um, that's what we've been using for several years. It is a proprietary thing. It is widely used in Utah and other states. Um, it's a, it's a popular product, and it, and it holds up really well. It's, it's, it's proven itself, and so that's why we proposed to, to use their specific, um, their specific product. Um, why we have, why Mapleton has done it in the past and why I'm, I'm proposing to do it again this year is because it has held up, um, well compared to, uh, other slurries. Um, or I guess the other products, they, they're, they're not necessarily a, a slurry, but other products that they could be, that it can be compared to. Um, and so, um, it's two hundred and seventy thousand, I think, uh, what we had transferred at the beginning, uh, wi- with the, um, original budget, uh, for, uh, coming directly from, uh, i- in our road fund, it was, uh, about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of the, um, road fund fee. Um, and then we added to that some, uh, some general fund, but, uh, i- anyways, just the, just the road fund fee that is directly towards maintenance more than covers, um, the cost of, of this treatment. So, I've, if there's any other questions?
I just have a, have a quick comment. Some of the roads have wide cracks on them.
Yep.
Would it pay to maybe fill those in with something before they put the slurry on so that it stays, so it doesn't crack open again?
Yeah, so I will be coming to you with a, with a crack sale project also, yep.
It's an action item, so we don't have to go public hearing.
I'll make a motion to, to, uh, approve the resolution to appropriate available road funds to the HAS high-density mineral bond treatment.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Beck and a second by Councilmember Egbert.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
Carlson, yes.
Great. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that. We'll go to Chief Jackson. He'll start us off with some reports.
Yep, this is a surprise. Be quick for you. You guys have had a long night. I want to report on the Public Safety Community Council, that, or Community Committee that was put together the first of the year. Um, it's pretty awesome, and it's being actually run and chaired by a citizen at large, and they're running that show pretty good. They're pretty ambitious. Couple things that have come out of those committee meetings. Um, one, seen a decrease in the amount of people interested in taking the CERT program. So our CERT director, Sue Diles, proposing to drop the CERT, not drop the CERT program, but do less courses throughout the year, two to one, three to one, whatever it may be. Do one course a year and then focus more on, uh, an event throughout the year, maybe quarterly where they do a preparedness or some, some sort of educational thing for the community. So, uh, that's been proposed by her. Another thing that has come out of those committee meetings is when we did our drill in April, we used the Everbridge system to notify the residents, the emergency system. We got some feedback from the churches that are involved, from the wards that are involved in that, uh, committee, that not all their members were getting that alert. That was a concern. So Lori was tasked with, uh, reaching out to those people that didn't get the alert, and she's finding it's one of three things. They weren't signed up for the alert system, they were signed up under Nebo School District on, on Mapleton City, or they were signed up under a family member's name, and they, and they thought they were getting alerts. So she is, we're reorganizing that. So, so that's, that's kind of what's happened with that. Uh, so any questions on that committee? Jess, could you have anything to add to it? You've been pretty heavily involved in it.
Does, does Sue feel like the activities, like the drills, have had good participation, and if she wants to do more of them, I would assume so, right?
Yeah, she's pro-drill. She'll, she'll do a lot of drills for us if we want to.
But, but that sounds like that's what she wants to do more than classes.
No, I think she wants.
If I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, sorry. I, this actual CERT program, she's not getting people registering for her courses. I think this time they had three.
Oh.
Something like that. So she wants to take that energy and focus on, in the quarterly, maybe not even quarterly, a couple times a year, uh, just at a class here on a certain topic.
Oh, not a drill, but just a, a bigger.
Community education.
A drill could play into it at some point.
Got it, got it.
Uh, so anyway, prob- I mean, I was supportive of it. I think that's something that we can, we can benefit from. So anyway, it's working well. Uh, it's all citizen-led, so that's pretty cool. A couple other real quick things. I talked to Chief Glasgow. He had nothing to report to you. Um, the youth academy started last night. Thanks to Jess, cause she showed up and welcomed, actually brought them all a book and, and gave them a message, so that went, that went really well. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks, Chief. All right, Sean?
Nothing for me.
Nothing. Rob?
Um, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, great. Reed?
Um, might mention the construction for the solid waste treatment. Plant is coming along well. The walls are up. Uh, we're putting up the steel, uh, roofing. Uh, we do have a problem with, uh, some excavation we're doing by the compactors because the water level is still pretty high in that area, and we're gonna have to, we're, have to modify some things in that area, but we hope there won't be too much of hiccup for schedule. So far, it's coming down. I don't know if you've gone down to look at it or not, but you're welcome to, uh, just drive by and look at it if you'd like to go on site. You might let me know, and I can arrange that if you'd like. But it's looking, it's looking nice. You can tell that there's gonna be a big plant there.
Yeah, awesome.
I think the seniors are doing just fine. Uh, I'll, again, I could be pulling him in the parade. I guess that's okay. I'll, I'll tail in the city council and pull the seniors with me. I was wondering if I could have a Mapleton flag, borrow a flag to stick there on the truck.
Logan, we got extra flags yet? Sure. All right, okay. One that, just like that, least one, right? All right.
You know, I'd like to put it below the American flag, the Mapleton flag.
That's right. That's excellent. That sounds great. Thanks, Reed.
No use of a flag, too.
Well, I don't know which one to put up. I've only got room for one more, so I don't know which you'd have to like to use.
Mapleton.
Mapleton.
For sure.
Yeah.
For sure. Great. Uh, Jessica?
Um, and since the last meeting, there's been a Utah League of Seasons Towns board meeting, and it's really just prioritizing what initiatives we're gonna be looking at and all of, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the, in the summer and the interim, so TBD on what we'll see there. Uh, as Chief mentioned, the Community Preparedness Advisory Council, that is the longest name. We gotta, is it council or committee? Either way, it's super impressed, um, really measurable improvements that we're tracking, uh, with this group. And so I think it is doing exactly what we want, and, and like you mentioned, amazing volunteerism from there. And so that CERT transition, it'll be the, uh, annual full CERT training, but then quarterly community education. We're hoping that this committee will host two events, police host one, and fire host another, so we can really have, uh, a variety of engagement. Uh, Youth Police Academy is full. It's awesome. I love how all of our officers are engaged there. Kudos to Chief and your team for, for getting everybody on board. It's just really, really impressive thing, so it's just a great opportunity for me to see some more cool stuff going on in our community. That's it.
Awesome. Thanks, Jessica. Casey?
Um, last week was the youth, uh, city council camp, and, uh, I know my kids had a great time. Um, and I talked to Sarah a little bit, and she said, and she said it went really smoothly, so just reported that it went really well.
I got reports from the kids on the council that were there. They said it was awesome, so. Great. Thanks, Casey. Leslie?
No report.
Um, one thing I, we haven't, maybe we talked about, Corey, and I have spaced this, but have we discussed, uh, what the council's gonna drive through the parade? Or were we still yet to do that? Does anybody have any, last year, did Jeeps, does that seem like something we want to do again?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
True.
All right. What's that?
No candy.
No candy?
Chief, come on. Chill out.
If you wanna hear a rant, keep going on. I plan to walk with a wagon. So Dan, like Dan can drive the Jeep today, but I wanna walk with a wagon full of candy.
Sounds good.
I walk every year with a bucket, so.
Everyone's smart. Do we need Jeeps? What? If everyone's walking, do we need Jeeps?
Well.
We chuckle about that topic, but we've had a couple close calls in neighborhoods, cities, we've, we've pushed that information out pretty hard this year about throwing candy from the moving vehicle or.
So just, what, no, I think typically, we have walked to hand out candy or you don't do it, right? Isn't that what we've done?
Yes, we have.
Yeah. Is that okay?
When somebody asks you about it, say you can absolutely throw candy, you just need to walk along.
But we want to be clear, you can't go back to your vehicle that's moving to refill it or to climb on and off it to get the candy.
Oh, you cannot?
No, that's where we've had the.
Stop, just needs to stop.
Oh, gotcha.
Or bring a wagon full of candy that goes to the side.
Gotcha.
That's what happened with the meat bike situation is the trailer was moving, so the moving vehicle had got that kid, so.
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha. Understood. Great. Okay, then I won't move forward with that, Corey. Just plan on that again when you make some calls on that. Camille? Yes.
Um, I don't know if you all have, um, seen, but our election dates have changed because of, uh, um, Rep, House Representative, or, uh,
Rep Stewart.
A Rep, Representative Stewart resigning. So the general election now is going to be on, uh, November twenty-first, so.
Ballots will hit mailboxes.
Um, ballots are going to be mailed on Halloween, so they will, you'll get, they'll get them the first week of November. Uh, yes, we have our three incumbents running, and then a lady by the name of Teresa Brunson, and then Sam Bernard. He ran four years ago as well. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Camille. Corey?
As I mentioned earlier, uh, July fifth and July nineteenth are, are scheduled city council meetings. I'd like to cancel the nineteenth one. Department heads are good with that, too. Um, so let's just plan on July fifth, obviously recognizing that's right around the holiday, but we'll try to get all the, our items for July into that meeting. Uh, Pioneer Days, July fifteenth through the twenty-second.
Yeah, probably.
We've talked a little bit about Pioneer Days. Any other questions? Uh, we've got the events posted. There's gonna be a magazine going out here. Yeah, a couple weeks before. That'll go to each resident, and that will, uh, allow our residents to see what the activities are for the, for the week. It's already posted online, so. Yeah. Yep, yep. We got a lot. We got a lot going on. It's gonna be a fun, fun week. Um, I do want to note, too, a shout out to our sponsors. We've been able to get more sponsors this year. And, um, we did things a little different this year. We had a title sponsor, and that title sponsor came in at twenty-five thousand, and that's Maple Mountain Insurance Services. So if you see Oscar around about, thank him for his willingness to participate in a number of other sponsors as well. Thank you, Mayor, for, for a few of, uh, of your companies, and then DIHC and, uh, or Intermountain Health, I should say. And, uh, I, I think the list is lengthy here, but it's on our website. And I'll, what I'll do is let me email that to you tomorrow so you can see that, that group. Um, and, uh, see that the efforts have, that they've helped us with that. And then we gotta go into closed session, um, if we, did we end here, so.
Okay, great. Thanks, Corey. Bryce? Okay, thank goodness. You spoke enough tonight. I mean, you're still recovering over there. Okay, Logan.
Uh, just echo on Pioneer Day stuff. Just let your friends and families know, just, uh, registration. It's always this way. It's slow, but just encourage everybody to get registered so we can kind of know what to expect. And in lieu of the meeting on the nineteenth, we have an awesome cornhole tournament that I invite you all to come be part of, so it's worth your, worth your time. Um, and then lastly, uh, Becky's last day was yesterday, so we started our interview process. Um, we had a lot of really good applicants, so we're, we're excited and hopeful to get somebody started as soon as we can, so that's it.
Hey, one other thing. Last year, I remember you were not happy that tents were set up at Aaron Allen Prior, 'cause you wanted to mow the lawns there.
Yeah.
Can we add this to the newsletter? The, when, when should they not put tents up for fireworks prior to what time? And let's get that on the newsletter so people know.
Yeah.
Cause it's hard to mow and get that already if they're already there, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's not as much the mowing as it is actually setting up our lines, so people know where to walk, so everybody's not just walking on top of each other.
Okay.
So.
So if you.
But, like, Friday at noon is what would be great for us.
Someday, our robot can make us some gridlines.
I know.
Someday.
Someday.
The middle of the night. So you're saying that they could set up after Friday at noon, or you want it?
Yeah, like even Friday at ten. I mean, if we can just give us a couple hours in the morning to get stuff done. Yeah.
Friday at noon for Saturday evening of that.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Not ideal, but.
They gotta make a decision.
You know my decision.
I know. He and I are on both sides of this. We're not gonna tell you what side we're on.
Um, but also, I around parking lot the last few years, we have offered handicap parking in there. It's certain, I see four spaces somewhere in there. We debated as a committee back and forth if that's something we want to continue to do, to offer, because we could use that space for some other things. And, uh, with the road closures, it comes with a problem, getting people in and out with the handicap slot. But other argument is always, we feel in the past, we feel that just people to get in there, be able to park, but it's full, it's full, and it's done. If another one comes by, we don't have a place to put them and send them along, so.
Our, our challenge has been, obviously, we're just getting more foot traffic, and so we're trying to funnel these cars right into that parking lot, and it, it makes it hard that way. And so if we don't have that forty or fifty vehicles, we're, there's still gonna be vehicles in there. Obviously, we have, um, you know, our bands, et cetera. We did not do handicap last year, right? Didn't we shut it? We didn't. We did, but we dropped it. We scaled it down quite a bit.
Well, as one who just renewed my parents' handicap license for my car, since I drive them, I think having parking is great, but I think equally, if not more important for an event like this, having access to come in and drop them off and get out, what?
That was the difference.
For handicap?
Off Sixty Center South.
Oh, just anybody that needs to drop off.
Is that, that's off Sixty Center South, though, right? That was the difference last year, right, is we did not allow them in.
Do we have any, any legal obligation to provide access for that?
Well, I'll double check that. We, we talked last year. I don't think we do, um.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think the result was that we don't.
Sponsored ADA compliance issue. If we could just double check that.
No. I'll, I'll, I'll just double check that.
We would, we would meet that standard with.
With the drop off?
I think making, making sure that that's easily identifiable and easily, like, get in this way and go out that way and get going. Yeah, that's great.
Is it also where most of the kids were dropped off, too? I, I know, were, were kids dropped off there as well?
The, the sign you have is four men limit or something like that.
Okay.
So if the original plan was for people to be able to pull up and get their heavy cooler out and drop off with that, you know, their cans or whatever they be, and then somebody drive off and park the car.
As long as people know that it's available for handicap people as a driver of a handicap person, I, it's just nice to know where I'm gonna go to do what, and then I gotta park and then get out there, you know, just to know what to expect. That's, that's.
Is everybody on the same page with that? Feel the same way, or somebody feel different?
As long as we're meeting any legal obligation, I align with the drop.
How do they work to pick up when everybody's leaving? Just forget about that.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Couple hail marys.
They better figure that out. That's what I see.
They take a pillow and a blanket.
Well, let's hope the fireworks don't start at ten-thirty this year. They start at ten, and then that'll help.
So we'll, we'll do some good advertising on that parking topic, and then also that one tents can be set up.
Okay, perfect. And more importantly, who's on what side of this thing?
Allowing it, and Logan, you were saying.
But the drop off, so the drop off is a, a good compromise.
Let's have a wrestling match for it. After the meeting.
Close.
A race, yes. Forty-yard dash. Uh, all right, uh, is that it, Corey, for you? Then, all right, um, let's, uh, get a motion to close this and go to clo-.
Motion to close.
And then a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go, close public meeting, motion to go into closed session. Person to fifty-two dash four dash two oh five.
Um, motion by Councilman Eg, uh, Beck, a second by Councilman Carlson.
Did we need to state the purpose for Camille's minute?
Um. Yeah, land acquisition.
Land acquisition.
So amend that to, for the purpose.
I'll amend that. The closed session will be because of the land acquisition.
There we go.
Okay.
Egbert, yes.
Beck, yes.
Jones, yes.
All right, great. Thanks, everybody.